Good evening. As the Board and Administration take their place at the dais, it is seven o'clock in time for the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education and the semi-annual public hearing on violence and vandalism and the score report. Roll call of the Board. Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Dr. Lowe is out of the area tonight. Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano? I believe we are expecting Mrs. Mangano. Probably there's some power outages and storm-related, maybe she's stuck. Mrs. Okerson? Mr. Thor is out of the state. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Present.
A quorum is present. Shall we rise to salute the flag and then please remain standing when Memorial 3rd Grader Avery Frick performs the National Anthem? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I can hear that strong voice already. (coughing) I think somebody's going to take a picture.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Stand right there, Mr. Bon Giovanni. Mr. Miller has something for you. Third time. Do we have her on the payers? Is this her third time performance?
Wow.
I think you need a, what's that, a SAG Performers Card, right? You need to be in the union. Well, thank you so much for coming out and sharing your voice with us. Thank you so much. Great job. The Board, it is now time for a brief exec, or I'm sorry, announcement by the President. This was covering it up. As read by the Secretary, adequate notice of this meeting have been posted as required by Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, on October 8th, 2019. It is now time for the Board to go into a brief executive session. The items this evening, a Hibb Report Negotiation Update. Please note the motion in the agenda for that executive session. With your permission, sir, a mover and a second, or the Board will be in executive session.
Is there a legal update also?
No, there's not.
Thank you.
Thank you. The dais, the Board is back in session. If we can take the minutes, please.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, second by Dr. Jeffrey. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, six votes in favor, one opposed. Mr. President, with your permission, it is now time for the Board President and Superintendent's reports. However, I would like, with your permission and the Board's consent, to move the focus topic up into the Superintendent's report. Officer Charney, Patrolman Charney is here, and I would like to get him on sooner rather than later. Seeing no objection? Okay, it is now time for Board President's comments. Mr. Bon Giovanni, President of Board, your comments, sir.
I have no comments tonight.
It is now time for the Superintendent and Board Secretary's report. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Isola, your report.
Yes, sir, thank you. And good evening. Just some update on some topics from around the district, as well as some important reports that we'll be delivering for our community tonight. First and foremost, I'd like to remind our community that Election Day is approaching, and if high school, the Freell Regional High School District does have a referendum, I encourage our community to get educated about that, as those issues and the work that is planned to do with that referendum, referendum for the high school district will impact our kids as they will be arriving at that high school over the next couple of years. So I think it is certainly worthy of getting the knowledge necessary so that you may be an informed voter. So, as always, we encourage our community to be active participants in process, and I wanted to make sure that Howell folks knew that that referendum would exist on their ballots for the high school district. Additionally, two Thursdays ago now, we had our, the symposium that we had spoken about, the Health Symposium, Monmouth County School Partnership for Wellness. It was a overwhelming success. I was so humbled by the outpouring of participation from not only the Howell community, because there were certainly quite a number of Howell participants, but the overall attendance was awesome. We had over 500 participants. We had speakers from across the state, and I really think it has generated a dialogue around this important issue of wellness and mental health that is lasting and should yield avenues of support for members of our county. And I'm excited to be a part of that, and I thank the Board for their support and direction on such work. So I think that was a really worthy evening of celebration, not only for this Board, but for Boards across this county. We did have a professional learning day, Columbus Day, last, this past Monday. As you know, the students were home. It was really a great day. Our staff engaged in professional learning opportunities. The majority of those opportunities were provided by our very own staff for us and by us. It was truly inspiring to see the collaboration across our entire district. We were down at Middle School South, and on a very basic level, it's something that I love every year, just to be able to bring our staff together on the one roof. They get to see colleagues in each other that they haven't seen in a couple of months, folks that taught together 20 years ago and now in two different schools. That collaboration and that togetherness is what I think helps, you know, culture, develop a culture of togetherness and family, and that alone is worth it. But the learning experiences were awesome. A great job by Jackie Moore, who's with us this evening, and Katie McNoly, who spearheaded those efforts, and I couldn't be more appreciative of two wonderful ladies who did a great job getting that day together. Just quickly, let's remember, "The Race to Educate" by the Howell Township Foundation, which is sponsored by the Howell Township Education Association. We always, the foundation always thanks them for their support. It's November 2nd this year. It's in the fall, and it's at the reservoir. It should be a really cool day for our, for our community to get together, raise some funds for a worthy cause that comes back to our students in innovative programs. So hopefully we'll get a great turnout that evening, that morning, I should say. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jackie Moore, one of our supervisor's staff. She'll be presenting our data. Each year, districts are required to report data out to its community on the state assessment. A couple of points here before Jackie starts, and I believe Bruce will be joining her at some point here. Just a couple of points of reference. So, you okay, officer? Thank you so much. I got voices in my head for some reason, I don't know. So, so, before Jackie gets started with this, it's an important point of reference that we understand, we are looking at one point of data here, and that's the standardized assessment, the statewide assessment. It certainly yields important information. We've been grappling with this data since we received it. The majority of the news is certainly positive. There are certainly lessons for us to look at here and to tackle, and gives us direction for our next focus of how we're going to proceed with supporting staff and students in their journey. So I think there's a really wonderful presentation. As weird as that sounds, sometimes data's a little, uh, you know? But I think it is really a good data. It will be, and I'll say this publicly, it will be a little bit more extensive than we're used to because of the new CUSAC requirements require certain points of data to be reported out, and, you know, which made us cut some other stuff out a little bit. So we're broad strokes tonight. As the Board knows, through any of our workshops, we can get into deeper dives, but we'll certainly entertain any questions at the conclusion of this, of this report. So with that, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Moore, before you begin, Joe, I wanted you to mention it first before I did in my comments. Just very quickly, there were four of the Board members at the table tonight who were at the symposium. You made us proud. I mean, I realize it was a, it was a committee of many administrators from across the county who were involved in that, but it was, you know, we've had an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves. I mean, it was really wonderful, and we want to thank you for being the light and being up there and really pushing that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So with this, we're going to be talking about NJSLA. I'm trying to not block your view and also not stand behind the flag for you, so I apologize. NJSLA is the assessment that replaced the PARK, which is the name that many are familiar with. So last year, 2019, marked the transition from PARK to the NJSLA. And we took the PARK for four years. We took the NJSLA for the first time this past spring. However, there are blueprints that show that they are comparable tests when you look back historically. Our students took ELA, English Language Arts and Mathematics. Students who were in either Algebra I or Geometry took the course-related assessment rather than their grade level. So instead of taking grade seven, if they were in Algebra, they would take the Algebra Assessment. They would take Geometry if they were in Geometry Assessment instead of grade eight, for example. We did take, the students did take in 5th and 8th grade a science assessment in NJSLA. However, the results have not been released for that yet, so this report will not include any science results. So when you look at NJSLA performance, performance is reported in five levels. So the lowest being Level 1, being that not meeting grade level expectation. The highest being Level 5, which would be exceeding grade level expectations. So the goal is to have students performing at levels 4 or 5, which is either meeting or exceeding those expectations. 1, 2, and 3 progress along a continuum up towards those expectations. So that will be important in a few slides as you look at some breakout of some data. So as you look on this slide, this represents English Language Arts performance across grades 3 through 8 in the district, and it shows the breakout of the five performance levels that I just referenced. So if you look at this, these red rectangles that are up here, those are showing the students that are at levels 4 and 5 at those grade levels. So for example, this is showing in 5th grade, 56.8% of the students met expectations, which is Level 4, and 12.6% of the students exceeded them at Level 5 in the district. So the number just to the right of that is the state number. So you can see, as you look down these rectangles, that we exceed the state at Level 4 and 5 performance. So the goal, of course, is, when you look at these lower levels, we want those numbers to be very low because we want fewer and fewer students performing at those levels. And you will see that they are comparatively lower. In a few slides, I'm going to show you more information about students progressing up through those levels. So as you look at the breakout of those scores and you think about how students are doing, remember, our goal is to have students at either Level 4 or Level 5, and that would be considered meeting the state's goal. So this slide represents students that are performing at Level 4 and/or 4 or 5 across the grade levels, and it compares it to the state, excuse me, compares it to the state So if you can see here, 56.7 compared to 50.3 in the state. So as we look down this district row right here in the red rectangle, we're really far exceeding the state performance-wise in English Language Arts consistently through every grade level, which is something we're proud to say that we're continuing to do. Now, a few slides ago, I mentioned that we would talk about the progression up those performance levels, and this is exactly what I was talking about. So if you look at this half of this chart, this represents students that are leaving the lowest performance levels, Level 1 and 2, which means they're progressing up to greater performance levels. So they might be moving from 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4, and so on. So what we want to see in this row is a reduction in the number of students there. So the negative number represents the percent in decrease of students in Levels 1 and 2, which is exactly what we want to see. We want to see people, children moving out of those levels. They may not be reaching the 4 performance level, but they're definitely moving up from 1 or 2. And then we want to see these numbers increasing. So students moving from the lower levels up into a 4 or a 5 level, and we see those increasing consistently up there with a nice 17.2 increase in ELA in 8th grade and in 4th grade as well. So we're seeing strong increases of students progressing up those levels, and that's indicating that our students are growing in the district.
Ms. Moore, just for anybody who might not have been able to read it, there was a note at the bottom of that slide. Could you?
Yes. So Levels 4 and 5 basically means that a student is considered to be on track for being college and career-ready. And it's important to remember that includes career. It's not just about, there are other avenues other than college, but they're considered meeting the standards of expectations to be ready for that. So as we look forward to math, the graphs are set up a similar way so that you can do similar comparisons. When you look at math, it's important to remember that there's a change in the way the test is given once you get to the middle school, because we have students in 7th grade that do progress into Algebra instead of 7th grade math, or to Algebra instead of 8th grade math. If they went to Algebra as a 7th grader, they then progressed to Geometry as an 8th grader. So when we look at math scores, we have to remember that 7, grade 7, grade 8, Algebra 1, and Geometry is not exactly the same cohort of students. Students who are qualifying for those higher-level math courses are not taking the 7th and 8th grade assessment. So as you look at this, you'll see district performance outpacing the state, and then you will see, across 8th grade, lower performance. The reason being is that across the state, many students in 8th grade are taking an Algebra or Geometry assessment. So they're not taking the 8th grade assessment. The highest-performing students have moved on to a high-school level course. So these rectangles represent the district performance, and you'll see strong performance. You'll see, again, we see evidence of those students being taken out of that 8th grade assessment and moving into Algebra, and then you see strong performance in Algebra. And then, when you combine Geometry, strong performance in Geometry as well. And we'll see that break down a little bit more. So again, when you look at the performance, here's our district performance compared to the state. So we see strong performance compared to the state. This is blocked out specifically because it's important to remember that that's not a cohort of students, again, going through a grade level progression. Students are progressing into their individual courses that they're taking, which are high school-level courses, once you start getting up to these grade levels. But we're seeing strong performance in math as well when we compare ourselves to the And again, that progression from Level 1 to 5 is what we're very interested in because that's showing a growth. So when we look at this, and I apologize, this is displaying, looking like it's laying over it, but it's 4.9. We want to see negative numbers in Levels 1 and 2 because that means students are moving out of those categories into higher categories of performance. So we are seeing that. And when you look at Levels 4 and 5, we're seeing consistent growth. This right here is negative 0.5, so a very small negative, but keeping in mind that some of these students are moving on to other scores. So it's very hard to just look at that 8th grade score because we have over 200 8th graders that are taking the Algebra test instead of their 8th grade, so it's a significant part of our population. So looking a little bit longitudinally, this represents English Language Arts longitudinally, and I'll explain the color coding. For example, we started taking PARK in 2015. So if we were to look at 3rd grade, our first grade span of students that took the assessment in 2015, 3rd grade, and followed them all the way to 2019, we would follow this yellow highlight. So you're seeing in the yellow highlight the growth of the percent of students performing at Levels 4 and 5 each year, which is showing a nice progression. And you are seeing some, some more increased difficulty in that assessment as well. But this is true for each of them. We are seeing some areas that makes us ask questions of data as to why there may be different levels of performance, but this is an example of one of the ways we look at it. You can also look across, which is basically the slides that I was just showing you, with straight grade level progressions. But this is one of the things we look at. We would look at a cohort of students and follow them through to look at individual student needs. We would also look at program issues that may come up when you look across just grade level performance. And I'll show you similar data in math. Again, these are not color-coded because that technically ends your cohort of students once we start breaking students off into a math, high-school level course of Algebra or Geometry. But let's look at 3rd grade again as the example, and this is just an example of the way in the district that we're looking at the longitudinal data. We're looking at that progression and asking questions of the data. For example, you know, why are we seeing 47.7 in 7th grade? A number of things happen. One is that we lose a percent of those students to the PLUS program where they move on to an Algebra course. You know, another thing that we do is we look at individual standards and look at needs and ask questions about, are there particular standards at 7th grade that the students remaining in that course need specific support in? So those are one of the things that we look at. So one of the requirements of CUSAC requires that we report subgroup information. And in doing that, it's important to remember that the size of a subgroup can certainly skew or sway the way something looks on the surface. So we're reporting subgroup information, and then I'm going to show you something that's maybe a little more helpful in terms of actually meeting students' individual needs in a very personalized way. So when we look at special ed, this represents English Language Arts performance over the past three years. So you'll see 29.4, 28.9, 31.1, math 22.9, 23.3, and 23.7. So we're not seeing a lot of change. Now, keep in mind a few things. This includes grades 3 through 8. It includes students at all different classification levels. It includes, in math, 3 through 8 plus Algebra and Geometry. So, you know, there's, there is a difference certainly in the performance, but it's not very helpful to us in terms of answering the question as to why. So we need to look a lot more deeply than this. But we also look, when we think of equity in the district, which we started asking this question, you know, well, last year, before it was a discussion really more widely in the state, we started looking at equity and asking questions like, why were there differing performance levels among different groups? And we needed to look for something that was going to produce information that we could take action on and support students on. So what I mean by that is this, some of these subgroups are extremely small, so we would not even be able to report a grade level of many of these subgroups without compromising the confidentiality of student performance. So I'm sure you're all familiar with data and how with a small change in a small data set can skew results greatly. So what we look at that is a lot more beneficial to us are things like this. Are we moving students through those progressions? Are they showing growth? So these are the same slides I showed you just a moment ago. Are we moving students out of 1 and 2 and into the 3s, 4s, and the 5s in ELA and math? And are there particular groups that we really need to be concerned about because maybe they are demonstrating very significantly different needs that we, as a district, need to be prepared to meet? So one of the groups that we looked at for this are the economically disadvantaged groups. And depending on which school you're looking at, we vary, somewhere in the ballpark of 16% for the tested students in grade 3 through 8 of a population. So we're looking at the difference in performance. So this, this row here, labeled difference, that is what we will identify as what we're seeing as a gap in the performance of students when we compare our economically disadvantaged students to our non-economically disadvantaged students. So this is something we're paying very close attention to. Now, you see the same, a very similar gap at the state level, but we're not satisfied with that. We want to dig more deeply, we want to answer those questions, and really focus in on helping to support these particular students where they need it. So to that end, we started a very deep conversation on equity, and Mr. Preston's going to talk a little bit more about equity. So...
Thank you, Ms. Moore. So, at this point, again, part of the requirements, but beyond requirement, we should be talking about, so what are we doing with the district in response to the data, in response to what we find out from the data? We should always be looking at our data for things we didn't think were there, right? We don't want to go in and confirm what we already know. We want to try to find truths that we didn't understand before we started looking at it. So we go through some of the protocols, and you've experienced some of those protocols right here at the dais, and so some of these are sort of pictures of some of the things that we've been doing leading up to this. We started, as Ms. Moore had sort of indicated, Mr. Isola started, a conversation around our data, what our data can tell us in terms of the equity lens, if we look at it through that equity lens. He started that conversation back in the spring. So while we see that there are some areas of celebration and there are some areas of growth and challenges that we have to face, what I find gives us great hope and great confidence is that we started this work before we ever received our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. So we knew where we were because this is one data set, and we have lots of data sets to draw on. So we knew what our work needed to be, and we started that work. In our learning design team, where we started really kind of, we went through a very deep process of analyzing our district-wide data, modeling it first on the, on the district-wide data, then allowing specific buildings to go and use that model to look at their data for their specific schools. So you take a random set across the district, then they get deeper, and we expand that random set when we get closer into, into each of the schools. Same, same group with the learning design team in some of their work. We also have expanded that work, so we're carrying it through. It's not just one group. The learning design team has administrators, teachers, and coaches that work together. This is our curriculum and instruction team working through those different sets of data. Again, this is prior to our, I'm going to say, final analysis of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. That's a misnomer. We're never done looking at it. We're always tearing through it. But in this particular instance, we were looking through our data from Response to Intervention, multi-tiered systems of support. We were looking at our CST data and our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. When we put that together, what does that tell us about the student who is receiving different types of students, different types of services, and what might they need? This is actually our ed committee meeting, so some of you may remember this tweet, walking through a right-around protocol, so another way of analyzing the data. I don't just want to tell you that we've analyzed the data, I want you to have the confidence of understanding firsthand how we arrive at some of our understandings of the data. So you've had some of those firsthand experiences. Even a few months ago, I think this was back in March of last year, where some of the instructional coaches came out and did the data dive right here at the dais with some of our data. So again, being informed about how we arrive at our information is important. So what did we arrive, and what have we been doing? So a few things that we want to, we want to reflect on. So... So in terms of the equity, again, taking a deep look through multiple venues, our learning design team, school improvement panels, curriculum and instruction meetings, leadership team meetings, everybody taking a different lens through same or similar data so that we can understand it more deeply each time we slice away a layer and go a little bit more deeper. But what we're really trying to do is dig deeply into our equity truth. We want to confront our equity truth and invite a discussion about that equity truth so that we can better understand it and make informed decisions about how best to answer the questions that arise. We are still in a question and answer phase right now, more so than an implementation and solution phase for some of those things that we're finding, though we do have some more answers. But one of the big questions is just how different? If two students are sitting in the same class, same school, et cetera, and they look different or have different experiences in life, are they having the same experience at the same time? It's a very complicated question. But is the curriculum treating those students the same way? That becomes part of the curriculum and equity conversation that we're really diving into. Another piece of our data, so it's really about digging into the subclaims. We can't share this kind of data at this kind of venue only because it's too deep, it's too complicated, it's incredibly nuanced. However, we will be coming back with all this data to the education committee and presenting new findings as they come about. We're not stopping here tonight with our conversation. It's going to keep on going through the education committee and then out through this group, through our briefs. One of the things that we found, so Jackie, Ms. Moore talked about the level three performance, right? Still not meeting state standards, but progressing towards meeting those state standards. What we're starting to find is there's a connection between some of the math subclaims, some of those smaller points of evidence, finer details of evidence, through some of those math subclaims and some of the language arts subclaims. Specifically, what we're finding is a pattern among some students, a pattern among some students in math, they may struggle to reason abstractly and then create models to apply to their understanding of the learning. So it's reasoning and application is the subclaim. They struggle in reasoning and application. What we're seeing is there is a correlation to also having a struggle in the subclaims in language arts that deal with inferencing. So interpreting and understanding even though it isn't explicitly written. So inferencing, reasoning, and abstraction, we're starting to see a connection over there. Well, the instructional coaches have done a lot of great work in language arts on inferencing. And what we've started to do is now look at our workshop performance, our readers and writers workshops strategies, and leverage them over into the mathematics classrooms. And we think by leveraging those strategies, we'll see great gains in terms of student performance in those subclaims of both inferencing and language arts, but also in mathematics. So cross-curricular strategies and approaches to improving student performance. Specifically, we think that's going to improve performance for students in those three, level three and level four brackets, raising those scores because that's where we're seeing most of that pattern. Looking at the special ed data, so you saw the performance over the time in special ed data. One of the ways that we started addressing this, again, this was before we even had the analysis of this year's New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, we began putting in place the Wilson reading system. Not putting it in place, but expanding it across the district. So now every school has a teacher who is being trained in delivering the Wilson reading system with fidelity and implementation. We are very confident that this is going to help the reading performance of students incredibly. And that's what it's about. It's not about increasing scores. It's about increasing students' ability to read, to write, and to do math better. Middle school scheduling changes, we've talked a lot about that here. Having an increased amount of time specifically for language arts and mathematics, we think will gain not only more valuable instructional time in these instructional areas so that we can see growth for student performance, but it also allows us to expand the amount and the types of intervention that we can do for students before any type of referral services might be necessary in terms of response to intervention and multi-tiered systems of support. Again, we started putting that framework. We've been having the conversation for about 18 months prior to it going into effect this school year, the conversation around the middle school schedule changes. With that, I don't want to, I don't know if you want to close, but this is up on the district website, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Moore, publicly at that. Up on our district website, by code, we have to do this, but it's great information. It is the calendar for the year. It is all the different tests and assessments that we are providing for the students throughout the school year, specifically the statewide assessments and any third-party assessments, those larger assessments that we provide to students and gather that feedback on. This is the web address where you can access it directly, or if you want to just click through the links on the district homepage, curriculum, and then assessment. Not only is it the schedule, it's kind of anything and everything that has to do with assessment within the district is up on that site. If you find something and don't, if you are looking for something and don't find it, please by all means call our offices. With that, I believe that is the end of, right, 25 is blank, so that's your questions.
So thank you, Mr. Preston. Thank you, Mrs. Moore, greatly appreciated. Mr. Bonjovani, I'll yield to you for any kind of questions that you may have for any of us.
Anyone have any questions? If not, I do. Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Like, I know you said that the reason the eighth grade was low was because you had 200...
Ms. Okerson, did you say Algebra I? I didn't.
I did.
Perfect.
Sorry. I know you said the eighth grade was low because the Algebra I kids were taken out of that, and I get that, but 200 kids in Algebra I is quite a lot, too. So maybe if that were a little scaled back, then that score would be a little higher, then the eighth grade would be a little bit higher.
So, and that's always something that we grapple with, quite frankly. Right sizing the number of students that are assigned or placed into the algebra program is a critically important work for us, and I do think that's an area that we could fine-tune a little bit. I think we've, we're in the process of migrating from a push to challenge kids as much as possible, stretch, you know, we want to do stretch curricular and items of that nature. We may have been, we may be over-identifying the number of students that we're placing in our algebra because we want to provide opportunities and challenge for them. And you know the data as well as anyone, Mrs. Okerson, based on your work, you know, the higher level of math completed in schooling, the better earnings someone has.
But they need the solid foundation in that.
Yes, no, right. So that, but that's the balance. So you want to appropriately challenge students, and that's something we've been looking at. In fact, you know, Mrs. Fedina, Mr. Preston, and myself, along with a group of the principals, have grappled with that. One of the points of conflict there is, and I don't mean this to sound disrespectful because that's not, I think everyone knows exactly how much I appreciate input from the community and parents, but parents find it, it's very difficult for a parent when they want their child in a certain program, and we're saying, well, it may not be the right fit, and we go back and forth, and we want, you know, we want to give a benefit of doubt. We want to push a child, you know, with care and appropriate resources. But that is a point of difficulty for us, and we continue to look at it. And your analysis may be spot-on that we need to be more, yeah, we may have to discern a little bit greater in terms of who we're placing so that kids can meet with success. To have, I think the number is somewhere in the area of 30 children not meeting with success on the annual year-end test for, that's too many.
The other thing that's worth noting, too, in Algebra I does have a higher, in order to pass it, you need a higher score. You need a four where you don't in the other two. Like, in geometry and Algebra II, the other high school courses, they'll take a three. The other thing worth mentioning, which is something that we struggle with in the high school, is if you go off the PARC blueprint or the NJSLA blueprint, they'll tell you there's 712 things tested on Algebra I, but we're testing in April, and you have to have it all done. So what we've done is cut, like, we've picked the stuff that we felt was important and then deeply taught that rather than trying to hit on all these millions of things.
Correct.
So it's...
Rather than watering them down, right?
Correct, yeah. And there's no way to do that successfully here or there, you know? Like, obviously, some are better than others, but it's just, you know, it's a tough...
It's a very valid point. I appreciate it.
I think, I think my question was very similar, just Ms. Okerson probably stated it a lot better, but what I wrote down was, I was just curious in terms of the percentage of students in eighth grade with math, algebra, and geometry, approximately, what are the percentage with the difference? How many are taking math? How many are taking algebra?
The three levels of math, what's the percentage in each?
Yeah, about.
Ms. Moore, do you have that?
I have approximately about... You've probably got about 50-ish kids in geometry. You don't have much more than that, if that, right?
Yeah, geometry...
Wait, this just in, I didn't know Ms. Fedina was here. All right, and let me call your attention to the question. Do you have that off the top of your head?
We have approximately about 57 in geometry. I believe it falls around that. Um, we have, what I was saying, sorry, there's about 57 approximately each year in our Project PLUS program that would be in the geometry program. Our algebra differs because we have algebra in both seventh grade and eighth grade, so that number, when you look at the state testing, will encumber those seventh grade students, so it'll look more than what it actually is for the eighth grade. So we would have to take out about 57 roughly, somewhere about that 54. We'd have to take away from that eighth grade, from that algebra number, because those students are in seventh grade as opposed to eighth grade. So then we have approximately, I believe we have a little bit over, I think, 120-ish in eighth grade in each building of students taking algebra.
240. So just, just a rough estimate there.
And did I hear the other day, did I hear correctly, that the high school is looking at maybe changing the order and geometry becoming...
Wait, seriously, you're asking her that question?
Ms. Okerson, please. Please, don't take offense.
Did I, do I under, or is there somebody else that you'd like to?
Could we, could we return the conversation to the dais? Thank you. So, working closely with Dr. Sampson and his team, the high school has announced that they are moving, is it a public announcement, Mrs. Okerson? That they're moving the order of the class sequence. That is their, you know, their choice as a district. They think it'll best serve them.
For only the kids that are taking algebra and geometry with us.
Correct. Working closely with them in vertical articulation, we determined that our sequence will be fine, and there's no major adjustments needed at the K8 level.
So it won't change the numbers we're putting in one versus the other?
The only thing will change the numbers is our appetite for debating with parents the number of kids who are entering on the algebra track at the earlier, at the seventh grade level. But it won't be as a result of what's happening in the high school.
Great, thanks. And I guess the other piece, and it's maybe it's more for education and not necessarily for here, but when you look at those percentages and stuff, I'd be curious maybe to hear in education sometimes how the equity piece fits in with those percentages, too.
So while I don't have those specific numbers now, what I will say is that has become a very acute focus for us, certainly starting back in July, to start looking at what, who's represented within different programs, all different programs that we have, and then why, right? So after we look at who's represented within those programs of our student population, why are they represented as they are within our population? Then what do we do about that if there's anything that needs to be done about that? So it's kind of a, I can break it down into three steps. Each step then gets infinitely more complicated, but it is work that we are well and aware, and Ms. Fedina has already started tackling that with, alongside of Ms. Losinger in terms of our G and T work. I know Ms. Fernandez has started looking at that in terms of our special ed programs, special education programs. So you've touched on a hot-button topic for us, and I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean in one that we're very passionate about exploring that equity lens with.
Great, thanks.
In fact, in fact, I believe it was a passport president who may be present tonight that reminded us all the time, it's about 100% of the students. And that's a focus that we have taken seriously, and I think we can do better work in that area, quite honestly. I think that is an area that we own that truth, and it has become, since the spring, a focus of the district.
Thank you very much.
But going, if you are interested in the geometry first and where we're at with it as far as Howell goes, the only thing worth maybe taking a look at would be what Howell calls pre-algebra, because it really is just eighth grade math standards, half of which are geometry. So maybe clarifying the names so that they understand that it is preparing them for algebra, but also for geometry as well, if you want to look at that.
I have two separate disparate questions. The first one is, obviously, when everyone looks at a lot of data, the first thing you look at is where are highs and lows, what seems to stand out? So one thing I was just curious about is looking at the eighth grade performances and looking at how many of the students were able to move beyond the level one and two. And then the other side of it, how many were able to move up to four and five in the eighth grade? It seemed to be quite a better, you know, jump in that grade level, and I was curious about that.
Excuse me, curious in terms of why we think that might be?
Yeah.
You know, well, one, because you have students who are perhaps historically, this is, I'm surmising, so you have students who are historically struggling to perform, but there's also the greatest opportunity for growth within those students. Because again, our highest performing students have most likely come out and into those algebra, into that algebra track. You see a lot of growth. That may also be the reason why what you're seeing, you know, that sort of flatlining or dipping in the eighth grade in terms of overall proficiency, because again, we're moving four to five, so their overall proficiency is staying in the same bracket, but they're also moving, that number was pretty large in terms of moving out and into level three. So level three is not passing yet, it is growth. So I want to go back to the comments I made about the subclaims. We see that connection in reading and mathematics now pretty clearly in terms of the way we've been exploring our data. We initially thought we saw a pattern, but we didn't want to assume causality, so we brought that back out, and now we start the conversation with our instructional coaches. We started that conversation with our administrative, various administrative teams to confirm, is what we're thinking we see in the data, what is actually taking place in the classroom? Is that the experience that kids are living? We're now more confident that it is, and so that's why we have great confidence that if we start leveraging the instructional strategies for inferencing, we'll see a growth there. And to that point, so Ms. Terry Cooney is in the audience tonight. Her workshop at the NSRIS the other day was specifically on these types of strategies. You were sold out, were you not, I believe? Standing room only?
Almost sold out.
Almost sold out. Well attended and also great feedback on that. So it's, not only is, are we seeing the need within the data, but staff is self-identifying that that's something that they know will help improve their student performance.
Following up on that, and it was fascinating when you talked about looking at inferencing in language arts and reasoning and abstraction in math.
Right, yeah.
Are they, are there similarities in terms of the skills that you would use even though they're in different languages in a sense?
Absolutely. So, and it's interesting that you put it in terms of different languages because it's still language that we're inferring with, right? We use different words to describe it, and I think that might be part of the obstacle in seeing it. But now that we're looking at it that way, so what we did was, once, once we saw the issue in the subclaim, there is then resources that we can go to, put the subclaim into the website. The website will give us the type of question that students need to respond to to be able to successfully answer that subclaim, or show mastery of that subclaim. We started looking at those math questions, and what they're asking is very similar to what is asked of the inferencing-type questions in language arts. So the, it becomes a place, it becomes the superpower, so to speak, of the instructional coaches to work with inferencing in language arts. Now we can leverage that over into mathematics and show growth. The subclaims work is, I think it's real, there's great value, great power in looking at those subclaims alongside of other types of data, because initially it just looks like, well, they answered certain questions right and they answered certain types of questions wrong. But when we look at that with other data, we start to get a really good sense of where kids are strong and weak. Another example of that from previous administrations of what was PARC and now New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was in basic math fact fluency in some of our schools specifically. We saw a challenge there, a weakness in that performance. What we did then is able to tie that to some other data that we had. We knew then that was definitely, it was basic math fluency. So we pushed that out to home learning, home math. So we pushed that out to home learning, home math, homework, and leave the, because it's at their, that's at their independent level of performance, they can do that on their own. The instructional level of performance, then we take back, three different data points that we put together. So the teacher works with the more difficult concepts in the classroom, the homework is left to the instructional, independent level. In that, in that particular school, we don't compare schools at the, at the dais, but in that particular school, so I'll leave the name out, but in that particular school for this year, we saw the greatest growth within the K-5 schools, in that particular school, for mathematical performance, and the second highest performance within the district for that school. So now, here's the thing, that was good for that place, that may not be good for all where it's appropriate, right? And it was good that year, we look again to see if it's good next year moving forward.
Any other questions for the dais? Seeing none, I'll move to the next item, sir. Thank you. Again, thank you, Ms. Moore, thank you, Mr. Preston, for your assistance in the presentation. At this time, I'd like to move our focus topic up, which was the transportation routes and bus stops. So that is your topic, but we asked to move it up so that in case there was any folks, we didn't want it to be too late into the meeting. So as you, as you, as you see fit, sir.
Please, especially since we have a guest.
Yes, so at the last meeting, the direction and the commitment from the administration, the direction from the board and commitment from the administration was to continue to look at the transportation routes and stops, even though we represented the progress. And we are, I know I said it last time, but I think I need to repeat it, we are blessed in Hal with the relationship between our departments and the police department, and I was gonna say, we're double blessed for the specific relationship that Patrolman Churney and the district have. I think we've probably, he's probably taking me out of his phone pretty soon, but he also will, he learned something in the data presentation, he learned that he should have let me, let him go first. But anyway, so Patrolman Churney with the Traffic Safety Division is here this evening, he has some comments and actually some announcements and good news as well, and some observations about the, the various stops that we looked at. Ms. Mercado, could you get those, that up on the, is it on the laptop? And some observations in general and some specific observations and some notice on progress, and he and I, I'm sure, will, will play off each other, but sir, with your, go right ahead.
It's gonna be a little weird using a microphone, I'm not used to using that, normally I have a loud enough voice.
Is it on? You're not really using it, I don't think.
Okay, sorry.
That's better, thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me come here to have a conversation with you about it. Number, the complaints that I get are vehicles passing school buses, unsafe school stops, and just overall vehicles speeding when the buses are out in the day. Buckaloo was pretty much the hot-button topic for the past couple of weeks, and...
This is the intersection that we talked about, Buckaloo, McKenzie, and Desai.
For the most part, none of the bus, none of the locations that were people complained about are unsafe, as long as the parents are there to watch their kids. There is plenty of room for people to stand back. There are sidewalks on McKenzie. I see a couple of people shaking their heads, so I would love to know your, the comments that you...
Let me just announce something, and I didn't share this with you earlier. Yes, I can. Thank you. One thing that Ms. Vasquez and I have been working on is this route in particular, and we have been able, on all three tiers, we're not going to have the opposing sides stand there. So the Desai children will not be on Buckaloo, the McKenzie children will. The Desai is now going to be inside Desai, we're gonna use Desai to get turned around to pick up the other side of Buckaloo. So it worked out real well, and in fact, the middle school route is actually eight minutes shorter. So that was news just in this afternoon, but thank you, go ahead.
Good to know. As I said, people were shaking their heads, I'd love to know what the, the issues were that, maybe I'm missing something. Okay.
I'm shaking my head. Sorry, I said it from the previous meeting, with the parents out here, something concerns multiple times. We have to put on a sign, and the parents are complaining about the stop, and the kids are in the street. You can't put on a parent's name, the parents will, they're... Is it a danger? Is it a concern?
Okay.
If they're that concerned, whether it's...
Okay, and that's fine, we're gonna have different opinions with it. So for about eight days, I was out here from a little after eight until about 8:45, to make sure that I got everything, to make sure I didn't miss anything. So for the first couple of days, I sat up here, so I could see the bus further down, down by carriage, so I could see the entire route. I got complaints about vehicles passing the school bus this way and coming this way, so I was trying to get everything. For the last four days, I sat further down here so that they couldn't see me with where the bus was. So if they were gonna go and pass the bus, there was no possible way for them to see me, I was, I was blocked by the school bus itself. At the time that everybody was being picked up, I had no cars all eight times passing the school, stopped by the school bus each, any day that I was there. So, so the eight days that I was out there, when the buses were making a pickup, there were no cars around the time that the buses were, were making their pickups. I think there's three up there?
Three for, for assigned schools, there's also some special programs that have additional ones, but they're special routes.
Okay. When the people that were sitting here on McKenzie, when they drove here and they parked over here and they stood over here, when everybody left, that's pretty much when I ended up leaving. They sat there a little bit later. I did poke some cars over before and after because they were speeding, absolutely. But the funny thing that I found out, I shouldn't say funny, I apologize for using that word, the people that were speeding down this road live within a mile of this intersection. So the people that are complaining are the people that are speeding. I have people that, they come out of McKenzie and they don't stop at the stop sign. I have people that are coming up the hill when I was parked back here, and I'm not trying to place blame, please don't take it that way. I'm just trying to say, there's a lot of issues that are up here, but in no way does this, is this an unsafe stop. Okay? And I know you disagree with me, Ms. Mangano, and that's fine, I'd love to have a conversation with you about it later on so we can, to, to discuss it, that's fine. But...
And so we also, you spoke about up the hill, I think you also identified a spot for a sign, and that sign, school bus stop ahead, has been placed? And although you did not witness anyone blowing the lights, as we put it, going past the red lights, that's something that we've been talking about at operations for several years now, there's been some legislation that has been trying to make the camera more of a witness in court, and if I say anything wrong, please correct me. Coincidentally, certidiously, however you want to put it, I had a student in class on Saturday in, in my Rutgers class that's from Ocean Township, and she shared that they have been through a cooperation, and I can't believe that somebody cooperates better than us, but we'll, we'll get there. They've had a patrolman actually coming in, watching the videos and writing the tickets, and although the jury, if you will, is still out on whether all of them would stick, they have had, what, about a one-third identifiable? Three ninety to one thirty, I think, are the numbers you gave me?
Yes. So the school, the township is eleven square miles, we're sixty-five. I'm sure that we have a lot more buses from private vendors that are going through town. However, they, they've identified three hundred and ninety instances last school year of vehicles not stopping or blowing the red lights, they were, that they were able to identify. However, about a hundred and thirty of them, they were able to identify the license plate and issued summonses for those. I've had a conversation with the prosecutor in town, I've had a conversation with my superiors, we're gonna try to start implementing that. We're gonna, we've had very tentative conversations about it.
Yeah, this just happened today or yesterday, so...
Yesterday. But it's, it's a good idea, and it seems like we have everybody on board. Now, with people complaining of vehicles passing buses, I didn't see it. Trust me, I would love to see it, because I would love to pull them over, have a conversation with them at the very least, and depending on how egregious it is, I wouldn't, I'll write in the ticket, it's not a problem. However, if we can have it on camera, we can identify who the, who the, what car it is by the license plate, I will go ahead and I will write the tickets for that, I will go ahead and get a copy of that, and we'll go to court, and we'll see how it goes. But again, the prosecutor appears to be on board with that.
And I think if we can just get the notice out that we are enforcing it, we have a mechanism to enforce it, we've reached out to our camera supplier, we should have two loners so that we can start the project, and then through the committees of operations and finance, we would discuss how we could implement a roll-up of having them everywhere. The process includes a form that Officer, or Patrolman Todd Gregory, who happens to be an Ocean Township patrolman but lives in town, so he and Patrolman Churney met and they shared the paperwork and the process. So we are, we are going to begin implementing that. That is one of the biggest things that keep me up at night, is somebody going through the reds and hitting the child.
Yeah, if I just may, so I just want to go back to the actual bus stop itself.
And this one is just one, I have several of the...
I want you to leave that one there for a second.
Okay.
Because that's the one that we had a lot of feedback from our community, I know you've been there countless times.
Several, several times.
And I know we took a ride together, because I wanted to make sure I knew exactly firsthand what we were talking about, I felt that was important. I was there during off-hours, so let me not mislead anyone. However, there was, we could have played a touch football game in the street, there was no traffic, but I believe some of the concern that Ms. Mangano points to from our community was based early on when there was the two bus stops on opposite sides of the street, and our transportation department trying to work out with the folks as best as possible how to get on the bus. I heard you say something, and I don't want that to be lost here, we are moving the Desai bus stop?
Yes, because, because on Buckaloo...
Hold it, hold it, finish, please. Therefore, there'll be only one bus stop at that four-way intersection?
Yes, well, let me just say, as of Monday, we are not gonna implement it because we have to notify all the parents, we're going to change that as of Monday.
That would give us one bus stop at the McKenzie and Buckaloo where the sidewalk is, right?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, there'll be no...
There should be no confusion, even though I, I, we have other places with similar types of roads where the kids cross, not even two bus stops, they cross using the red lights and the crossing arm. So it would not be unheard of for this to be a crossing, but to end that confusion, McKenzie will stop on Buckaloo with the bus doors facing McKenzie. What I was going to say is because there are students on Buckaloo who only front Buckaloo, they have no choice but to be on their correct side, the bus needs to turn around somewhere. It was turning around on Janicee, now we have routed it actually with fewer road miles, so that takes care of our sustainability issue. With fewer road miles, we're going to go in and out of Desai. Desai has another opening down here on Buckaloo that's not in the, in the picture. So we're going to go in, so these students will be picked up about fifty feet in on Desai, on this end and, and down there. But those parents will be notified in the next two days, and we'll begin that on Monday on the three tiers.
So now that, even before that change, have we gotten feedback from Ms. Vasquez and/or the drivers? Because I know we've been paying close attention, because we are concerned about what we're hearing from our community, and we want to be responsive, but we also have work to manage, right?
Right.
So as the feedback now that we're a month in, do the folks on McKenzie, the youngsters that are getting on the bus, do they understand that that stop is now there, and are we seeing, you know, we're not in the street anymore?
Yes, and that was, I mean, I'll say it this way, Patrolman Churney was ready to say it was okay before he knew I was turning on Desai, but that just takes that, that element of confusion, if you will, away, that essentially the bus is there, but you're not getting on it, wait, I'll be right back.
So I, I believe what I heard from our folks, so it was a new bus stop, right? So we changed the location for them, and because of the two bus stops mirroring each other on opposite sides, it sounds like some of that, like the photograph that we saw from that fine gentleman where kids were in the street may have been over that confusion, and maybe even with our bus driver.
That would be the only reason for it, yes. Otherwise, they should be standing, waiting for the bus to...
Has our bus driver reported that we're finding kids where they belong now, in terms of safety and being on the McKenzie side?
The transportation depart, they're all private, so it's second-hand. So yes, through our transportation department, I'm getting that message.
Okay.
This is first student in Durham, they're, this is not a Hal bus.
Good, because I, I just, it sounds like we've taken a lot of steps, and I want to be really respectful to Ms. Mangano, and certainly Mr. Thor, who's not here, his point of view, but when we balance these things and the measures we take and the partnership with the police department, I think really is a good faith attempt here to make sure that A, they're safe, they are always safe, and they're even safer when we, when we work together. So I'm glad to hear that update, I knew that from you indirectly, I just, I wasn't sure we were implementing that change, which would help eliminate that confusion.
As you, as you know, when you called me this afternoon, I was down with Ms. Vasquez doing this work.
So I appreciate getting that update in public session.
So, so, and, and this was probably the, and I don't want to say that there's any part of town that, and we were at PTA President's Council last night, they raised some issues, I was familiar with each and every one of them, and, and we were dealing with them. So it's not that the squeaky wheel, if you will, is the only place we put grease, but we pay attention to all the stops. We, you know, Daybreak Court, you were out on that several times, Woodbine and Strathmore, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that was an easy fix, because the bus was moving further over into the shoulder, and there was a little bit of confusion, you have the bus that actually stops in the lane of travel. It's much more obvious that the motoring public is supposed to stop, particularly by the vehicles that are gonna overpass it.
Right. And in a very collaborative way, and I mean that sincerely, not in a, a police officer way, but Patrolman Churney was able to talk to the bus driver and explain why, even though it may seem like getting on the shoulder is a great idea, it's not. It makes the drivers behind you confused. So we addressed that as well. And Daybreak, Woodbine, Strathmore, Snowmass, they've all been witnessed and, and discussed, and I think the level of discussion with the parents, I've, I spend hours a day on the phone with parents, and they all, they all have reached an understanding of what we said, that, you know, if you are following the rules that we teach in kindergarten and we reinforce in the other years about waiting for the arm to come out, waiting for the traffic to stop, and all the building people, for the, the ones that are here, reinforce that, you know, it's a partnership. We have, we have stops on, on a lot of roads that are much busier than Buckaloo, and with, through the partnership with PD and parents and, and the buildings, and, and us, a four-way partnership, we, we, we have a, a good practice.
And Bryce Canyon. I thought you were gonna say something before, Ms. Mangano? You look like, you're, you're getting ready to say something.
It doesn't matter, you know, at this point, obviously, it's just...
No, but, but if there's an issue, if I can try to...
I mean, there's extra, if you can be here and explain this all, I mean, if you're the expert, I'm not an expert.
But if it's a concern, I would love to hear it.
So as a mother, my kid's standing on that corner, when you can go down that block and pick them up, I don't know why you'd do that. I mean, I, I do it there first.
Okay. I, when I was out there...
I've heard from the parents, I've, I've heard from the parents today.
Okay.
They're still unhappy.
Okay.
So they're not coming here, because they're tired of walking and not getting results. I'm sure Mr. Sampson's actually followed through, I know that he has followed through on that, I have good faith, but when it sits with me, I'm not comfortable with that, and I'll never be comfortable with it.
Okay. Now, just so I can understand, and maybe I'm missing something, and I'd miss a lot if you asked my wife, so...
My wife says the same thing about me.
Where is your main concern about people standing?
On that corner.
Which one, ma'am?
Right, or your viewpoint.
Right here? Okay. And then the concern is the bus stops here, and then they cross?
Up and down and around, coming around, so where is that being affected?
No, the bus, if I may, in case I didn't explain it right, the bus will be coming from the south with the doors on the right-hand side, the doors will be facing McKenzie, it will stop, it will partially block McKenzie just because that's our practice. We don't want to stop here leaving McKenzie the ability to empty. We don't want them to come out either. If there's a car leaving McKenzie late for work, they're going to have to wait. I'm sorry, and we have full support of PD. If you're late for work, leave earlier, it's just that simple. So we'll partially block McKenzie as soon as he'll be sitting here, the doors will open on that side, they'll come out. I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, I have it here, doesn't it work? So they, the bus will, will pull up this way, stay in this traffic lane. One of the things that we had a problem with is the bus drivers thought they were helping by getting out of the traffic lane. Same thing as we talked about in Daybreak, that creates a confusion for the cars behind them. So they will stay in their lane, open the doors facing McKenzie, load those students and then turn down Desai and I'm not sure exactly how many feet down Desai, but they will pick up. So the Desai children will not be standing here with that confusion of whether they should go across or not. And, and that was something we changed specifically, I, I did say the squeaky wheel doesn't get the grease, but that was something we changed specifically for this stop that does exist other places in town. So it will be on the correct side, right where a sidewalk empties on. I don't think there could be a better drawing of this. If I had drawn this with a magic marker, that's how I would have drawn it. Does that, if you were thinking it was the other way and they still had to go across the traveled lane, I apologize for giving you that, that impression. It, no, Desai is a, Desai is a horseshoe.
Desai's a loop.
Desai goes down, comes out and comes back out to Buckaloo, it's not in the picture, down here. And then, then it'll continue on the route. So it's, it's, and it's even shorter because it, which I'm, I'm, you know, I'm happy about making the route shorter, so. Does that help a little bit? They're, they're not going across the wrong side and they, there is no confusion who gets on at which stop. I think that's a drastic improvement. Even though it does work with everybody understanding, including the driver, and I believe the driver tried to be nice in her mind. She was saying, hey, if we all get on, we can get to school earlier, no, stop, you're not in charge, we are. So that was taken care of as well.
I'm glad to see you made a change, but at the same time, I think it is important for the community to know that the original design never had the children crossing Buckaloo.
No, it did not.
It never, so the photos we saw of children in the street was not how it was ever designed to be.
Correct.
I will tell you that I'm still, I will tell you what I think is still going to happen because I am familiar with some of the families on Desai. So some of the children who live on that part of Desai, not what's showing the other part, when, where you were standing.
Did I point the right way?
When they come out, when they come out to Buckaloo to cross over to Desai because there are fences there, because they can't go through people's yards, I'm just hopeful that they don't see their friends over on the McKenzie side. But we.
And especially, I'll tell you at the middle school level, sometimes middle schoolers don't stand on the right, but that is absolutely something that has to be, the, the, the parents need to give that permission.
That's the parents.
You know, if, if they're, if they're comfortable with that, I mean, I'm sure the kids, there's some basketball hoops and other things in this, in all the streets. So I'm sure some of the, some of those students, when they become children, play together in the, in the afternoon.
This makes sense.
I guess my concern would be that, you know, where's the most likely, out of the cul-de-sac where there were much safer back in your cul-de-sac, putting them on this four-way street and now it's.
You know, I, I, I have.
It doesn't, it's not going to change for me, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and there's, there's probably a hundred cul-de-sacs in town, so it's, it's not just McKenzie, so, okay. I, I do have some, just if anybody is, this is, is Dear Ron, this is further up, this is between Desai and Carriage, same thing, they have sidewalk on both sides, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So before, actually go back. So if you continue down this way. If you continue down the way I just pointed, it'll bring you this way. So this is just basically the continuation of the same road.
And then further down from that is Carriage, but I don't have a picture of Carriage because that's actually a square. And then we get up to Windswept and this is where the one homeowner was representing and we are now coming down this part of Windswept. So we're picking up here rather than on Buckaloo. And that, that is a component of the whole change for efficiency, not for any reason that the original stop wasn't okay. And then this is the one, that's done for that area now, if, if we can. We had a discussion of Strathmore and 524, you see this side of Strathmore, this is where, what the gentleman was talking about. Both sides of here have it, there is no stop over here, so there's none of that confusion. And Strathmore is on one corner in the pickup and one, another corner in the, in the drop-off, but always across Strathmore. And then, was there another? Daybreak, so. And this is.
Actually go back, that'll show you, isn't that the loop?
Which one?
Go back to.
That's Windswept there and Windswept that sidewalk all the way along. You can't see, the small picture was there, so. I think these were some of the ones that were under discussion, but as, as I said, through our, oh, there's Desai, thank you.
So this is, this is the stop, this is the side, that's the big horseshoe that we were just talking about? So if I understand you correctly from what you just said, the one stop's going to be here, the other stop's going to be here?
Yes.
Roughly?
Roughly, yes. It may be a, a little bit more on the bottom, it may be 200 feet in. Oh, I got to use this thing, sorry. All right, so we continue, although I, I think we're light-years ahead. I, I am talking transportation every day of my career when I'm, when I'm representing all of you and will continue to do that. I absolutely treasure the relationship we have and, you know, we continue to make Hal a, a great place and I think the testament to it is that Patrolman Cherny's standing here tonight with full support of his superiors and we continue to work hard. Anything else?
Patrolman Cherny, thank you so much for your efforts, both being there, seeing, making the stops you did stop, coming here and spending the time with us tonight. I think it really helps clear up a lot of, what I'm going to call confusion more than anything else in terms of where some of the stops were.
Sure, and I think that there's, some of them are new stops, some are just tidying up the stops and I think that's pretty much the, the easiest way to put it. But thank you very much for having me.
We always appreciate the support from the police department.
Thank you for the conversation, Ms. Mangano, I appreciate that. And again, if anybody has any problems or questions, please, by all means, reach out to me, I'd love to, to talk with it and I'd love to make sure that I understand the issues that everybody's having. That way I can give you the best explanation that I can with the most up-to-date information that I can.
Hey, it's just in. And I do want to, I do want to say, well, you handed me the form when you walked in, so we have the form for. We have, and I just got the stops. We have the forms for the red light stops, I don't want to end without falling back on that. That's something that I think will be a, a large positive, to be able to, to enforce that. So I will be, like I said, Ms. Vasquez is arranging with Sayon to get two for a trial and then we'll be discussing the, the possible implementation of a camera on every stop sign. So, thank you.
Sure. When you say stop sign, you mean the ones on the bus, just for the.
Sorry, the sign that comes out when the bus driver puts on their red lights, there's a stop sign and there'll be a camera on that and that would be the one that they would come view and if they believe there's sufficient information and sufficient identifiable license plate, we'll be issuing the ticket.
Mr. Sanzak, Mr. Gorman still had a question.
I know since our last board meeting, soon thereafter, did some traffic studies, you put in, up signs to let the public know that there's a traffic stop, a bus stop ahead. What about that issue?
So I mentioned the one that is kind of across from Carriage on Buckaloo. That one takes care of that hill that comes down to the Windswept area. And then on the bend just before Conover and White, even though we moved the Verdana students back in with the cooperation of the Verdana community, taking that pole out and, and designating the bus stop, there are still people that live on Conover that that is their bus stop. So we carried through and we put that one there. Because if you can picture that as you're coming from Georgia Tavern approaching to go to Wawa and get a cup of coffee, there's a pretty sharp bend, it's almost a right-hand turn just before Conover. So we put that on the Georgia Tavern side of that bend where Patrolman Cherny recommended it. And we're looking at some other spots, but one of the things we're concerned about is we don't want it to be the boy who cried wolf and have one at every bus stop. We want it to be the ones where there is actual, I believe I said that correctly, right? Where there's an actual, site-specific, where there's an actual need for the sign. And we have, we have purchased quite a few blanks and we're ready, as they're identified, to do them. We do have a sign-making machine, so we can do it at our, our discretion.
Again, thank you very much, we really do appreciate you being out here.
Thank you, have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you again. So we are in the superintendent's report, but the focus topic was moved up. So if you're concluded, just let me know and I'll move on if you need to have further discussion, okay?
Still you.
Okay, great, then with that, I'm going to move to the, the final item of our report tonight. And each fall, we are required to give our semi-annual public, uh, hold our public hearing on Violence, Vandalism, Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying Report, that's a lot of words. So tonight, Ms. Fernandez is with us again to report out on the period covering January 1 of this current year to June 30. We do six months at a time and then in the winter, we'll do the six months that are, we're in currently. So Ms. Fernandez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Isola. Good evening.
Good evening.
According to public law, 2001, Section 298, the third week in, in October is Designated School Violence Awareness Week in New Jersey. In addition to School Violence Awareness Week, which is designated for the week of October 21st through 25th, in October, we also recognize the Week of Respect, which is designated October 7th through 11th, and Red Ribbon Drug Awareness Week, which is designated October 23rd through 31st of this year. Every district is required to plan activities to prevent school violence and to invite law enforcement personnel. We always work closely with our school SROs, SLEOs, 3s, and they continue to be highly involved during this month. The board has received a list by school of the many activities that are occurring during this month. These include special training sessions on safety for students, drug awareness, bullying awareness and bias prevention. In addition, the law requires that acts of violence and vandalism be reported out publicly two times a year. The information that I'll be providing at this time reflects the period of January 1, 2019 through June 30 of 2019. With that, there were 20 cases reported in the area of violence, five cases of vandalism, three cases in which weapons were involved, three cases of substance abuse and seven confirmed cases of harassment, intimidation and bullying. In total, there were 68 HIB trainings provided and 63 HIB programs provided during this time period. That does conclude the report, if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez, are there any questions, sir?
I have none. Anybody else?
Great.
Thank you, have a good evening.
And then in closing the report, each board member had.
May I, may I just, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, you're going to do that, I thought you were doing something else, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to.
I just need to do the public hearing on that when you're done that, I apologize.
So each board member tonight at your day's location, this was a follow-up, this was the program for the evening symposium that we held at Brookdale Community College. I, I know that not everyone was able to attend it, but I did want to see, make sure that each of you had one so you saw the speakers and the topics that were included in that evening and you all either selected, or, I'm sorry?
We have.
No, that's Larry, that's, yeah, I stole it from him. And each of you should have either received or picked a, a stone. This was a follow-up from our Monday in-service. One of the things we talked about was kindness stones and starting ripple effects. So each employee at the, on their way out of the general session was, picked a stone from, from buckets that our staff was able to provide for them with inspirational sayings. It's something to help guide them and remind them of the importance of kindness and family and having gratitude and just starting ripple effects of, of positive and kindness, those types of things, small acts that end up rippling into perhaps huge impacts on individuals. So as part of the general session, there was a, a piece in, in the conversation that spoke about that and then each employee was able to grab a stone and we certainly wanted to include you in. Ironically, I hold one that says family, we wanted to include you in the family and make sure you all had a stone of inspiration. And then finally, I, I have been sending many invitations out as per our conversations earlier in, in the summer perhaps, to a lot of events that's happening. I know some of you have been able to take advantage. Please know that you are so welcomed in the buildings and we really appreciate those that are able to get in there. Not everyone could because of work schedules and I totally get that, but we want to make sure that we're opening our doors so that the board can see firsthand the work that is, your, your efforts are yielding. I've asked my office, I'll be working with Ms. Gray on kind of maybe organizing that because they're coming fast and furious, I feel, maybe into a weekly thing unless there's something more urgent. So perhaps every Monday or every Friday, you'll get a list of things that are upcoming for you in addition to the board updates, but just as separate invites. That may help organize it for you so you can pick and choose when it works for you, if it does. But we certainly want to know, you to know that we welcome you in the buildings, the staff and the principal do appreciate you there and, and, and seeing their efforts and the work they're doing with children. But again, we do that in an organized manner, so there's no surprises and that's just good, common courtesy, two ways. So I just wanted to share that with you, I'm excited about everything that's been happening with the opening. It's been successful, it's been smooth, it's been busy, but I think we're off and running to a real good start in terms of what's happening throughout our buildings and dealing with minor things as they occur. And so with that, sir, my report is concluded and I think you have to open for public.
Thank you, yes, so with your permission, I will open the public hearing on the, on Ms. Fernandez's report on Violence and Vandalism and the public comment because it is now time for that as well. So whereas, I'm sorry, sir?
Please do.
Whereas the Hal Township Board of Visitorship should determine comments from the public may last 45 minutes and those comments will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 164.1. Individuals may be limited three minutes each. The officer of respect to the time and decorum will be the president of the board, Mr. Mark Bon Giovanni. We will open first for a public comment specifically on the public hearing for the Violence and Vandalism report and then go into the public comment for the regular agenda. With your permission, sir, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments at this time on the report? Seeing none, sir, will you move into general comments?
Sure, but before you, before you open it up for that and even realizing that there's only a few members of the public here, it was something I intended to say anyway, so I might as well go ahead and say it. And it stems from the last meeting and a couple of my fellow board members spoke to me about the meeting and, and how it went and I, and I probably should have done this the last meeting and I will make sure I do it tonight, is that there are always two public comments. This first one, there's another public comment at the end. We do have a time limit, but I don't ever want to feel, if anybody's watching this from home or if they watch it later on, I don't ever want them to feel as though they're being shut down for time. Because the board does have business to do, there are times where we will let the public speak, end the public comment, do our business and then open up for public comment again. That just needs to be understood by people, so with that, go ahead and open it.
For the general agenda, are there comments at this time? Seeing none, oh, sorry, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Levine, 24 Poplar Street. At first, I want to start off with just commending each member of the board for their commitment to each child that is in our community. I'm aware of just how much time and effort goes in to representing the community and ensuring the quality of education that our children receive. I'd also like to make comment and. I'd also like to make comment in terms of the administrative staff, completely starting with the superintendent and going down to all of our curriculum directors, as well as building administrators. They do a bang-up job. That's meant in a positive sense, in terms of a bang-up job. You know, I'm not one who limits my words, Joe. But most importantly, I want to make comment about our teaching staff. What we know from the research is, as good as the curriculum is, as good as the supervision is, there is nothing that comes close to the impact that the teacher standing in front of a classroom has on the development... And I don't just mean academic. I'm talking about personal, social, emotional development as well, that the teachers provide to our children, and they are to be commended. And I hope that my comments are, in fact, shared with the teaching staff, as well as the other members of the staff. Nurses, secretaries are invaluable in terms of what they contribute to our children. I thank each and every member of the Board, of the administration, and most importantly, of the teaching and associated staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Levine, it's good to see you here again.
Further comments? Now, seriously, seeing none, may the floor be closed, sir?
Please.
Thank you. It is now time for committee and liaison reports, sir?
Start from my left. Mr. Gorman.
No report from the Legislative Advocacy Committee on the Policy Committee, in terms of the Policy Committee. We had two issues. One was for discussion, the other was to vote on. The one that we voted on was Policy 6112, reimbursement of federal and other grant expenditures. So, the federal government, of course, expects that once its money is granted, it should be properly dispersed and accounted for. Our state has standards that are then reflected in the regulations, and we have to comply, of course, and we want to comply. So, there have been some minor changes in the language of the state regulation. We changed them as we understand them. There's no negative impact. In fact, it might be even somewhat positive for us. So, the committee, you know, voted positively on that issue. The second issue, I'll just mention briefly, was an issue for discussion. Ms. Fernandez pointed out, this is the issue of entrance age for kindergarten. And as you know, our entrance age is October 1st. If you're born after October 1, well, wait for next year. But, I guess. And that's simply the one standard. So, the discussion revolved around whether there should be some changes to that. There are students who have gone to certified schools prior to that, coming from out of district, some from out of state. Just as an aside, we know, for instance, in this city of New York, students now start public school education at age four, but there are students who have had experience before that. So, we did not... And I'm not going to go into a great length at this now, because we don't have an actual policy before us. But the sense of the committee, after a discussion with Ms. Fernandez, was that perhaps we should be looking into consideration of allowing students who do not meet that age requirement to perhaps enter kindergarten under certain conditions. And this would involve assessing and screening for academic and developmental readiness, and requiring perhaps a transcript from an accredited kindergarten program. So, we look forward to an actual written draft with a policy, a specific policy, in the future. One other point, you all know me. I try to restrain myself from speaking, but Dr. Levine's comments just leave me to say one more thing. Again, attending the in-service program on Monday, I would just, you know, really echo in maybe a fainter way, not as successfully as Dr. Levine, the same thoughts. I cannot believe the quality of our staff, our teachers and our other staff, the commitment they make, the work they do, the creativeness they have, the cooperation they show with each other, their collaboration, and all for the concern of doing something for our children, for our students. And again, I know there were all sorts of presentations, but some of us will be going to school board convention next week, and we'll have all sorts of high-powered and wonderful presentations. But all you have to do is stay in Hal Township. Go to the in-service program. We had, if I'm not mistaken, more than 90 programs presented, but how many? 95. This is beyond outside source. It's 100. It's close enough. We'll make it 100. We'll make it as much as you want. But again, to see that kind of work and that, you know, the creativeness and that commitment and to grow and to explore, it's just absolute... And to make the difference in our children's lives. So, again, I commend Mr. Isola for setting this up, and all of our administrators, and for all our principals and vice principals, and all of our... All our top administrative team. And of course, commend the teachers and staff for all the work they do. Thank you.
Any questions?
You said there was a policy on... For approvals this evening?
Well, is it...
Which policy?
So, it didn't...
It was one for them to consider at policy level, I think is what he was referencing.
It didn't go on. It didn't go on, then. That... Yeah, and what I'm talking about is the reimbursement of federal...
You voted on a policy, you said?
Yeah.
So, where did that...
That's not on? So, it's not on. All right. But it did come out of committee. Came out of committee, so...
It came out of committee? So, where to go?
Well, we'll... Next time.
Oh.
First read. Right. So, if I'm understanding Director Fernandez correctly, they had discussion at policy. Now, she has direction to draft the policy for the committee to vote it out to you. Yes.
Actually, I attended policy, and it was a really excellent conversation, especially for newer members for looking at policy, newer members of the committee, regarding the difference between policies that come as directives from the state or the federal government, and the difference between that and a policy that might have come out of a situation arising in district that gives us reason to look back at it. For example, the entrance age to kindergarten, or going back even further, remembering the conversation that you brought to us regarding the dress code, last year or two years ago now. So, it was really a very good conversation in terms of how that committee works, and I think it cleared it up for a couple of people there. So, anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Gorman. Mrs. Malley?
Operations has not met since our last meeting. I did attend the Monday morning in-service. Thank you. The presentation by Mr. Isola. I did not stay after that. I was unable to. But to re... Just to say that Mr. Gorman's words were very eloquent and spoke what I felt. I could feel the energy in that room, although all the dedication and the collaboration was happening. I could feel it, and it was wonderful to see. And thank you for those inspiring words, Mr. Isola.
Mr. Miller?
Finance has not met, so I have no report.
No comments.
Mrs. Okerson?
I just wanted to commend you again on the symposium at Brookdale. I was able to attend, and I know that you had some help, but it really was an amazing night, and I thought they were really inspiring speakers, and I thought you touched a lot of the community. Not only, I saw parents there. I saw, you know, teachers from this district, teachers from where I work, administrators from where I work. So, I really think, you know, we didn't stop talking about it for a couple of days after, so I really thought it was a nice job.
Mr. Magano?
I attended both the symposium, which I've mentioned already, which I thought was wonderful. Glad to see that work is continuing. I know you're planning on other events in the spring. I was also at the in-service the other day. I thought you did a great job with that, which is not a surprise, but my favorite part was really watching the staff and their camaraderie ship with each other in terms of, as you said, people who may not be in the same building anymore, and the obvious joy they had in getting together with each other. I attended a session which I really very much enjoyed, gave me a lot to think about afterwards. So, thank you.
Discussion items? There were no discussion items requested to be on the focus, and it is now time for the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Malley. May I... Any discussion? May I take it around, sir?
Please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes, with the following abstentions, 3000-1, 3000-2, and 3000-3.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes, with an abstention on 3011.
Thank you. Mrs. Mal... I'm sorry. Mrs. Magano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes, but I would also recuse myself on 3001, 3002, and 3003. Thank you.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Seven votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted on the 3001, 2, and 3, and the single abstention on 3011. All motions passed, sir. Thank you. It is now time for the second public comment, if I may?
Please do.
Whereas the Hal Township Board of Advocations determines the comments from the public may last 45 minutes, will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw. Oh, one, as I said before, time may be restricted to three minutes. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the Board, Mr. Bon Giovanni. May the floor be open?
Please.